Oh, you're welcome. Okay, I'd like to bring the school board meeting Tuesday, October, yep, 2016. We'll start the roll call on my left.
Heather Furlong, School Board.
Brian Garland, School Board.
Sean Carroll, School Board. Russell and Superintendent.
Paul Skerritt, School Board.
April Royce, School Board.
Kelly Wessels, Business Administrator.
Terrence Kirin. Jody Cargan, Sanofi Central Elementary and Primary. Answer right. Megan Reed, Assistant Principal, Sanofi Middle.
Sean Moynihan, Principal, Sanofi Middle.
And Sean, can you lead us in the pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, just a moment of silence, please. Okay, move on to the approval of the school board minutes, September 7, 2016. Some link in motion papers.
So there was a request to make an addition to the minutes from our community member. Mr. Brandlady wanted to add a little more detail regarding the comment that he made during the second public input. And you see it in front of you. He also asked for clarification on whether the meeting was a Sanofi school district meeting or a Sanofi school board meeting. When informed it was a Sanofi school board meeting, he stated that non-school board members shouldn't sit with school board members because there is whispering going on among the members and non-members that the public couldn't hear. If they were separated, then comments would be louder and everyone would be looked at. So he's asking for that to be placed in the minutes. What currently is in the minutes is what is above there. He feels that non-school board members shouldn't sit with school board members.
Do you need a motion? Insert that in. I'll make a motion and insert that in one minute. Okay, motion taken. Paul, we have a second?
Paul, second.
Okay. Normally, we don't alter the minutes. The only thing is, I think, it should be in that then.
Right.
So we actually...
So you could make a motion to add these to the back of the minutes or attach them to the current minutes that you... And I think we've done that in the past.
So that's what...
It's sort of what I said, add that too. Not in addition to.
Okay. Is everybody comfortable with that?
Yep.
Sure. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Okay. So, coming back to the minutes. Make a motion on the minutes themselves.
A motion that we need to approve the school board minutes.
Motion made by April, and we have a second?
Second.
Second by Brian, and discussion. You're none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Extention? Motion carries. Okay, agenda review.
I would ask that we have an agenda item G. That's set to approve for time at the first.
On action. So added to it is G. Okay, next is public forums, and...
So I'd ask that we move action item E. Point, propose student representative to this section of the meeting.
I'd like to move that forward so that you can participate. We do have a student rep. So now, I suppose, if you'd like someone to make a motion.
So I motion...
I'd like to make the motion that we move to approve the student rep.
Okay. Motion's been made by April. I mean, Heather, and would you like to second?
Sure.
Second by April. And this is for someone to fill the seat of the student rep. Jackie Balch is the person. Any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Extention? Motion carries. Welcome. Welcome back. This is our new student rep. Yeah, I think so. You want to give a highlight of it, or...
I don't... Heather, do you want to speak at the process? You control the full ones.
Why don't you give us an overview?
Sure. Sure. Well, the opening for student rep was made available to all seniors, and a few applicants came forward. And the applicants provided the superintendent, the principals, and the school board members with their resumes and letter of interests. And there were three that came forward, and they then interviewed one night. Each of them sat independently and went through an interview. And during the interview, they were asked the same questions. And those questions included things like, how will this affect your career goals? What do you think you could bring to the school board? How could you act as a voice for the student body and bring that forward to the school board as a student member? And we asked again the questions to all three of them. And we ended up deciding that Jackie would be a terrific fit for that role. And she had some really good points about bringing information up from the student body to the school board. So those were the things that caught my eye. And I know, Sean, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add to that. But if you wanted to say a few things, would that be okay?
Yeah, you'd be fine.
Okay.
Thank you, guys, for allowing me to be up here. And hi to everybody that's come to the meeting.
And basically, you'll be getting the same information we have, including the confidential information and participating and hopefully bringing back and forth some framework. More or less be the ways on between and get simple as far as what you feel should be brought forward to us from the students. Great. Welcome aboard, thank you. Okay, public forum. We're going to move to the public forum session. And I just want to remind the board members, the people that do speak in the public forum, when you're talking about the agenda, but they also, you will be able to keep that much, to be more directed to the board itself and board chair and the folks. So is there anybody here, is there anybody that would like to bring something forward in public that's for the agenda? Do you want to speak towards the agenda, or any points about the agenda that you'd like to bring forward? Okay, you're none. We'll move on. Move on to presentations and world language curriculum update. Nicole Carter. Is it Mike Carter?
Do you hear it pulling down?
Okay. Welcome, congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I'm Paul Skerritt.
Good evening. Thank for allowing us the opportunity to share a curriculum update with you this evening. I'm Nicole Carter, the Spanish teacher, and we're a French teacher. We wanted to talk to you a little bit about the courses that we offer here at SMHS. First of all, we have a language discovery course that Ms. Radek teaches. It's an interaction to the study of language for both Spanish and French, and it's offered to sixth grade students as an elective. We also offer Spanish levels one through five and French levels one through five. And we are new on Twitter, so if you want to check out some of the great things we're doing in our classroom. We've just created the account, and those are some pictures of earlier this week, with some student-created activities that they did in upper-level Spanish.
So a big part of our curriculum document was aligning it to standards. And since in New Hampshire, there are no state-mandated standards for world language, we chose to align our curriculum with the standards created by ACTUAL, which is our largest professional organization as world language teachers. It stands for the American Council on Teaching Foreign Languages. They've come up with very sensitive standards called can-do statements. We chose them because they are worded in a very user-friendly manner that's accessible to our students for self-evaluation. But also, we thought that they would be able, we would be able to use them to assess the students eventually. There's an example of one on a novice level. I can communicate on some very familiar topics using single words and phrases that I have practiced in memory. So the standards are, there are five categories. We chose only to use one of the categories, which are personal communication, which has to do with speaking and understanding when you're communicating with another person live. There are other standards like professional writing, professional speaking, interpretive reading and listening that we didn't feel applied as much to what we do in our classes. So in the, under the heading of interpersonal communication, there are, the standards are broken down into 11 levels of difficulty from novice to distinguished speakers. And within those levels, they're broken down further into about 125 different standards, all phrased starting with "I can", finish the sentence. And we address those 125 standards, probably not all of them, because we just think those are quite intense throughout the five years of language.
In relationship to our course content, first of all, we review all of the previous year's topics into our levels. So we start our school year that way, and then, of course, we're always reviewing throughout the year because you can't just forget everything you've learned from the previous level and then just move on. So we're constantly reviewing, and then we add new units of study each year. We work together so that we're pretty much introducing the same units of study, though there are some differences because of the differences with the languages. And, sorry about that. Based on that information, we went through and chose the can-do statements that were appropriate for each level of our classes. And we work together to do some different lessons that give the students an opportunity to be a little bit more excited and a little more actively engaged in their learning. So we did a World Language Cup, which was a soccer tournament. That was a very cultural activity. And we do a famous figure study that we're going to be doing next week, actually. We do a cultural cook-off where they get into the kitchen and do some different cultural cooking and share it, and they get to taste it. And we do an Olympic games activity at the end of the year, which is what you see pictures of here. So we review with different sporting events.
We pulled in some of the upper-level students to rep the Olympic events for our level of students.
So in regards to our curriculum, our next steps, we plan to continue to work with our can-do statements. As of right now, the way that the students use them is they come in at the beginning of the year and they assess themselves and what they feel they can do with a document that we have that has them all listed. And it's more of a self-evaluation. At the end of the year, they do it again so that we can see their growth. We're looking to turn it into a document that we can also use to have them prove that they have these skills. And so we're working on that. We'll be working on that this Friday during our in-service day. And we also hope to attend the ACTUAL conference in November so that we can learn about what other schools in the country are doing with these statements. And we'll continue to implement and evaluate them for curriculum.
What percentage of students take the language or it's not?
I did it last year.
What was it last year? Last year, what percentage of students?
I want to say for the students that were eligible, it was about 80 to 90 percent of the students that are eligible or seventh graders don't currently have an opportunity to enroll in first classes. But with the sixth graders, the eighth, ninth, third, top, that was about 70% of the students.
Do we start young enough?
Of course, we love to have it all through the elementary school. It doesn't exist right now. But in the past, we've done. We really supported the, in the elementary school, they do a spring elective club. So the elementary school can get a taste. Our students have always taught that, designed the lessons, gone and taught the club with our support of course. And so it's been a nice way to get the elementary school kids aware of the possibility. That's always something.
So they got to seventh grade. Do you have a plan to sort of bridge that so that we don't have enthusiasm in the sixth grade and then it's lost in seventh grade and eighth grade? Is it, oh, yeah, I remember. Do you have that?
I think it's been brought up for discussion in the past. And we just redid the elective model for middle school last year. So with all of the schedule changing, I don't think it was on the table right then because of all of the other changes that were happening. But certainly, we would be supportive of that happening in the future.
With 80% participation, how does it break out? French, Spanish, how's that? Fifty-fifty, sixty-four?
No, maybe one third, two thirds, or about that, yeah.
Have you got any feedback from your students that have gone through the whole curriculum and then gone to college and told you whether they were prepared or not prepared?
I actually just got some feedback through a student who was in contact with a freshman in college this year. She went through five years of Spanish, and she feels very well-prepared. Her teacher is from Mexico and is a fluent speaker, and she feels like she can understand him 90% of the time as a freshman in college. So for me, I feel like that means she's prepared for life in college in Spanish.
Yeah, and I've had quite a few students come back. Of course, the ones who have a successful experience are much more likely to be the ones to come back and say, oh, this rep, I was very well-prepared. But I remember your son, you know, at Dartmouth, he tested into level three, even having taken the senior year off of the schedule. He was pumped about that. Yeah, so kids come back, and Jack Bertens came to see me to say how comfortable he felt because of the way that we taught language and made them speak, 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 and pressure them all the time. Express himself, he walked into his classroom and felt like he was the only one who could really speak just because he was so used to doing it. Jen Cogardale, same thing. She was made the head of her travel group to the Congo in Africa because she was the only one who could really interact and speak just because we pushed the kids to speak all the time.
Sean, do you want to state further to the next point from the scientist next to the presentation? Would you like?
Thank you, Greg.
Hi, everybody. I'm happy to be here tonight to share a little bit about what I do in family consumer science at Sanofi. And so, family consumer science, I've been teaching now for about five years. And it sort of has taken place of what we all once maybe knew as home at. We have advanced what the offerings are to include, obviously, both males and females, and really expand and go into having students be prepared for life. And that's kind of what we're all about. So for the new culture guidelines for family consumer science, in the middle school, the curriculum provides the foundations for students to begin their journey towards becoming independent citizens. And in high school, we're hoping that the curriculum provides the foundations for students to explore adult roles and responsibilities as well as career workplace skills. And these are some of the courses that, well, these are the courses that we offer here under the heading of family consumer science. To begin with, That's Life is a seventh and eighth grade class that we started this year. It's the first year for this particular class, and it's offered for a semester as an elective. And it's in collaboration with guidance counselors. And we explore the relationship between education and career choices. There's a program called Real Game, and that provides real-life opportunities for students to explore having a career, having an occupation, setting a budget, and all those things that go along with that. And we are preferring students to be successful members of society. Hello Kitchen will be a course offered second semester, seventh and eighth graders as an elective. And it will encourage nutrition and wellness as we, you know, enhance the idea of just overall well-being. If we will teach kitchen and food safety and introduce techniques, terminology, and promote time management and teamwork. Foundations for Fashion Interior Design is a high school course. It's taught second semester. It's new to Sanofi last year. It examines the scope and industry of fashion and interior design industry. It develops the foundation in the design process. We develop, it develops the foundations in the design process. We talk about interior design as well as fashion design. It gives the students the chance to be creative and to sort of explore the career opportunities within that, those topics of fashion interior design. And then finally, there is the food preparation course that's offered to high school first semester. We're focusing, once again, on nutrition and wellness, consumer information, how to know what you're buying, and be educated consumers, introducing the preparation techniques of being in the kitchen, and foods of other cultures. We encourage creativity and self-sufficiency so that when our students leave home and they go off and they're on their own, they can make something other than, you know, butter and jelly. So I brought with me tonight three of my students from my high school fifth class. And I'd like my students to come up and introduce themselves. And they're going to tell you a little bit about what we were just working on over the last couple of weeks.
Hi, I'm Kaylee Edwards, Mrs. Doctor.
Hi, it's Les Suda, and I'm Julia.
And I'm Anna Villia, and I'm also Julia.
We, over the last couple of weeks, we've been doing a little project, and they are going to talk a little bit about that. And then we have a little surprise for you after that.
So last spring, the middle school students in Miss Parsons, as part of the spring elective program, created an herb and vegetable garden right outside of the home at Noma's Road. This year, we came back to school and greeted with a bounty of beautiful and fresh vegetables. The food prep class decided to put these things together. And we made recipes by making fresh sunny salsa. We harvested tomatoes, various kinds of peppers and onions, and began chopping, mincing, and dicing. Salsa-making seemed to get going much better when we decided to form a little salsa background. We followed a basic salsa recipe. After taste testing it, we decided to incorporate our own ideas. We added more or less pepper depending on the heat we preferred, and sunny salsa was born. After all the hard work, we wanted to make sure that the salsa could be shared and enjoyed by friends and family. So we decided, we decided to try our hand at it. During one class period, we prepared and filled the jars and placed them in a hot water bath. After they came out, we listened carefully and checked the list to make sure that it was proper still. We decided the labels would give us good, unique, and personal-fleshed salsa. So the prep class visited the computer lab and got a little taste of how to Photoshop with a couple of lessons from history. Each student created a label that was then placed in a beautiful jar of salsa. Our Sanofi salsa is truly an example of what can be accomplished when people in classes work together.
For those of you who are interested in sharing some of this with us, we would like to share with you. And the green ribbon represents a little on the upside. But please note that the labels on each of these, there were six students who made labels, and each label is made, well, made by each of the six students, so they're different. And they're all seven of us. Any questions? For any one of us?
Megan, could you just give a little overview from a curriculum standpoint regarding sort of how we're all teaming together and using the sixth grade as a critical class or the family consumer science?
Yeah, so I think this year is our third year in the curriculum articulation process. And we're using a program called Atlas. Our teachers have done a lot of work in mapping our curriculum and articulating our curriculum. And as people are working in that, I think more and more emphasis is being put into planning and looking what folks are doing and raising... So we had a sixth grade class participate. We had our computer technology person. We had some digital photography. We had our art class, we loved, we had clean preparations. So that curriculum's coming together.
Very good. Nice job.
Thank you.
Yeah. That's all right.
I like the labels.
Okay, great. Very nice presentation. Okay, Sanofi school updates. You'll start with Jody.
So we've had several field trips over the past few weeks. Our kindergarten and first grade classes have gone to or took as part of their plants and natural resources units. Today, our fifth grade participated in a program put on by the Lake Sanofi Protective Association. They're quite local schools, and they have different stations relative to the watershed and water quality. And then third grade will be going to the credit number four in a couple of weeks as part of their colonial unit. The SPTO Chowder Challenge was a great success a couple of weeks ago. It was a great Sunday in the harbor. It was the perfect temperature for chowder tasting. And the winners, the people's choice winners, because that's the most...